Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start out with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll consider August 2nd, 2017 agenda. Any additions, corrections, anything that needs to be moved around? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Sean to approve agenda for August 2nd, 2017 as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we start out with comments, updates, and concerns, and first we start from citizens. Anything from citizens? Counsel.
Um, Jessica.
Um, yeah, I can, I got one. We had a meeting the other night with Dr. J and Barbara Rossi. And they were visiting Gaylord, and we had a very good meeting with the medical school. And positivity is probably what came out of that meeting, that I can say the one word to describe the whole meeting is positive, because everything said, yes, the medical school is coming. And the one comment that I heard that was at Sotoma Avery is that there was some questioning because it wasn't heard around town. It's been kind of quiet. People are wondering if it's even going to happen, and this Barbara Rossi said, "Let me explain that, Dr. J." And she said, "It's not if the medical school is coming, it's when it's coming." So that was her answer to Sotoma. So the latest we heard is within the next two weeks, we should hear something back for the first round of the COLA review, which is a positive thing, because then things will start moving forward. By the end of the year, we should find out if the possession and remodeling of the school will be starting this fall yet.
In October, they're open.
In October, they figure they could find that out by, so Avery. She's a go-getter, and she's going to be the dean of the school, so she's a go-getter, so that's very fitting for what they're doing. So I'm very happy to hear all that, and very proud that we were able to attend that meeting and meet them again. They're good leaders. Okay, Jim?
Just a little update on police officer. Tony and I did final interviews a week ago with candidates. We did select one interview who was going through the background processing and everything like that right now, so. Some good candidates, and I think this young person will fit well in our community once it's all. And Tony's update to me a lot yesterday was that all the remarks back on the background so far have been very favorable. In fact, commendations in the guy's file at where he's currently an employee, so. So that's where we're at, hoping to have him onboard here, and you know, maybe 30 days or so.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, then we'll move on to consent agenda. There again, any additions, deletions, or corrections within the consent agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tom, seconded by Jim to approve consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Public hearings, we have none. Communication requests and petitions, we have nothing there tonight. So we move on to number eight, department and committee reports and action items. And 8A, we're going to start out with city service department. Ty Reivers wants to talk to us about some tiling at the Ball Diamonds and football soccer field, we call it, I guess.
Good evening. Um, for the tiling of the baseball diamonds in the football field, um, they were originally tiled, and they've been tiled for a long time. But the tiling has plugged up, so the last couple, three years, three, four years, anytime it rains, there's just standing water everywhere, and it stays there, and, uh, there's a lot of standing water on the baseball field, and between the baseball field, and actually in the old football area, too. And I think when they put the storm drain, or the storm sewer in in the last project, they actually stubbed an eight-inch pipe out to reconnect that, and with the city taking over that property, we went and got, with Avery's help, we got two local contractor bids. One was from Tom Eckbird, tiling for $8,091, and the other bid was Shaw Drainage, and it was $27.29. Basically, they're exactly the same, uh, footage and that kind of thing, but I think Shaw's kind of giving us a break because it's the city, and it's probably helping with advertising, that kind of thing, and it's a good little project to get done. Like I said, it does need to be fixed, sooner or later. It's been a problem quite a few years, I know. This past, especially this past year, just to get some of the kids to play baseball, they were digging holes in the field and bucketing the water out, trying to get the water off the field, so. It's something that needs to be done, and for that price, it's a really good price for the work that needs to be done. So we're asking to approve the work done by Shaw Drainage for $27.29.
Did you see the email from Jim Swanson?
Yes, and I did talk to him, and answered all his questions, yeah. Yeah, he's okay with it.
I'm in favor, we've got to keep it, but the only question that I have, Ty, is being that it's a park and recreation area, was this ever discussed at a park and recreation meeting?
Not at the meeting, but we did email everybody last week, I believe, and see if they had any concerns. And Jim Swanson had some questions, and we did answer those about permitting and MPCA issues and that kind of thing, but.
The only reason I ask that, I don't like, I wouldn't like to see city council step on our committees' toes.
Right.
You know, because I, otherwise they're going to start thinking, "What are we here for anyway?" So that's the only reason I bring that question up.
Right.
Because I think it's a valid concern that we have these committees out here, that they do the investigating for us, that's their job, and then bring it to council, which you did that on your own, but I would like to see it go through the proper channels, you know, from this point. I agree with this 100%, don't get me wrong, but I would love to see it go through our proper committees, if we could, from now on.
So the next meeting we have, I'll bring it up and get any discussion that's up and get it through there and bring it back. And that is third Monday, third Monday, and.
We can move forward with this. I have no problem moving forward with this now, Ty. I'm just saying from here on that we should probably try to keep everybody in the loop. So I'm not saying that we can't approve this. If council wants to approve it now, they can go ahead and approve it. I have no problem with that. I just wanted to bring that out.
Okay.
So it's up to council what your intentions are, and move forward with the tiling project that Ty has brought before you.
Timeline?
I'm assuming before harvest, because that's when, after that, the Tyler's get pretty busy. Probably end of this month, probably early September, probably, I'm thinking.
And I guess the other, the follow-up on that would be coordination with our community recreation because of whatever they may still have going on, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, we don't want to run all over those guys and make sure that, yeah.
Avery, you had a concern?
One other thing that is coming up behind us, once we get the tile in, and we can run that by the park board, so it doesn't have to be done right now. They'd like to, it's between the two fields where that shed sits where they store all this stuff in. The softball teams in the school would like to cement all the stuff there, make batting cages like they have over at baseball park. They've raised all the funds for the netting, they've raised the funds for the cement, that's what they do. So basically, it's going to cost the city nothing, and then they're going to put their batting cage, they have a pitching machine for the kids, doctors, so they can at least keep girls softball, so they'd like to do that, but they didn't want to do the elevators because the water was gone, so it's going to be in that very water hole, so.
So that'd be a good item to bring up when Ty brings the park and recreation board up to speed on this, and then bring that up at the same time, so that can get planned right after tile and stuff.
I could help with that, so I think if we do the tiling, once they come to the stuff, they're going to start laying cement to do this at the park board, okay?
Yep.
I make a motion to have the tiling done by Shaw Drainage with a quote of $27.29.40.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Jessica, to have the tiling done down in the softball field and football field by Shaw Drainage for a price of $27.29.40. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Then we move on to your next item. Ty, I have some tires, the way it looks, huh?
Yeah, for the CAT 140 grader, the bigger grader, it's needed tires for a couple of years. We finally got it in the budget. We put it in the budget this year to get some purchased. And we did get a bid off of it from Pomp's out of New Ulm. He also does state bids. He works with the counties and stuff, and does a lot of tire changes for the counties. And the state bid per tire, using Bridgestone tires, was $16.77 per tire. And he actually told us that their, the other brand, the Michelin, is actually, it's cheaper by a little over $100 per tire, and also, he says, the counties buy that tire instead of the state bid tire, because they like it a lot better, rides better. Uh, the total for those tires would be $94.30. It would come out of the street budget. Like I say, it was, it was budgeted for this year. Those tires, we figure that grader probably puts maybe 30 hours a year we put on it in total. We're expecting those tires to last 15 years, probably.
Long as it's a grader.
What we budgeted for was more than this amount, do you know, or was it just all included in?
Uh, I think the budget, the line item was.
Line 440, do we have that handy, what that actually number is?
It's 11 something, I think it is. 11 something with the line item?
I'm hoping I didn't have to look it up. It's not that important, we still need them, so.
Yeah, I just, public information.
Sorry.
New tires, I don't know, there's $11,500 in that line item for, and it includes new tires in their clothing allowance and the brush pile cleanup, so.
So you're a couple thousand under. Is it allowed for that other stuff, so you should be fine, Ty?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the tires from Pomp's for the Michelin at $15.61.72 apiece, for a total of $94.30.86.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jim, seconded by Tom, to get new grader tires from Pomp's at the price of $15.61.72 each for a total of $94.30.86. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
That's all I got, unless anybody's got any questions?
Any questions of Ty? Looks like you're good to go, man.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ty. Now we come back to 8B, and this is where we left off with the workshop, and this would be the administrative search.
What are we moving forward with, Hunter?
I consider, if anybody desires, I guess.
The things that you mentioned about the organizational skills, handle multiple projects, that's already in the job description under knowledge, skills, and ability, so you already have that covered. You could put something about excellence, leadership, abilities. I don't necessarily see something like that under knowledge, skills, and ability. We could add that, since that was something that was discussed a lot during the workshop.
And what did you recommend on the desirable?
Well, you know, the desirable things, we, we heard live in town, and we talked about experience with public administration, things like that.
Do we actually put live in town in there?
I wouldn't, I just would, I wouldn't put that at all in there.
Right, because we didn't last time, we just put that in the job offer, that we pay for moving expenses.
Some of that you can probably find out through interviewing.
Yeah.
But the main thing that seemed up in there was the experience level, whether it's three years previous or five, and what type of experience.
Why wouldn't we want to put it under desirable? It's not required. Why wouldn't we want to put, you know, that, I mean, I think we've all said we would like it if they would live here. We're not saying it's required, so I don't know why we wouldn't want that under desirable. I mean, if you don't put it in there, if you don't put it in there, I mean, we're going to have a guy who potentially is hired, who's going to live 60 miles away, and we're going to say, you know, "We'd really like you to move here," but he's going to say, "Well." I just don't understand why you wouldn't want to put it in as a desirable.
Just my personal opinion from the legal perspective, I would just rather not make an issue out of it, because you'll, you'll get an idea, like the mayor said, what people want to do. In fact, the number one candidate who has made the first offer lived at least 60, 100 miles away, and the city felt that that person should have been, well, should have been city administrator and was given an offer. So I just don't think you want to limit yourself. And I just, I just don't want to create unnecessary issues. That's just my opinion. Is it going to be that big of a deal if you put it in? Probably not, but.
I did receive an email from Wendell Sandy today, like after lunch, just asking if the council wanted to get together to meet, to discuss some, you know, to go over some of these points, so that they could start the search, so. So I don't know if you want to send, set up another workshop and have them come down here to meet with you?
I think it would be advantageous, but we got to speed up the process if we're going to.
It doesn't sound like you guys are all that different than what was the first go-around? Or am I misinterpreting?
Or more actively involved in the search, I don't know, I mean.
What was their recommendations? Didn't they want, um, it didn't sound like they were just going to do the first round all on their own. They wanted input from.
Correct, they want input from the council.
In your brief conversations with them, did they give you any timelines, and where they want to put the search out for, for to get the number of applications back? Did they say two weeks, three weeks?
No, I just, it sounded like, uh, it was, seemed like a shorter, I don't know, like a four-month timeline type of thing from start to finish, but I don't, you know, it was just a very brief conversation I've had with them, so. Would you like me to send out an email and try and set up a workshop between, another workshop between you and then this Wendell's, somebody from South Central?
Whatever council feels they want.
I'm trying to find from last meeting their. As far as they go, it says they recommend a hiring committee composed of two council members and two to three community members. So that would be another thing we'd have to look for some community members. And that would be for the first round interviews, and then the next round would be the full city council. So those are things that would have to be done, too.
If we're going to follow that template, then we need to do something before the workshop, is finding community people that want to be involved, so they're included in that workshop.
Maybe you would want to term it a special council meeting instead of a workshop, just so you guys can make decisions.
Make actions, yeah. So at this point, if we're looking for people from the community, is it going to be somebody that council wants to be, the people from the community, or is we going to just look for people to volunteer, and then we end up with one or 100? I think we should select.
I was going to say, if you have somebody in mind that you would be.
Yeah, I'd rather appoint. And how many members did they say from the community?
Two to.
Two to three?
Two, I thought you said.
Well, it was two council and then like two to three community members or something.
You can invite people to express interest, just with the understanding that out of whatever group you're going to appoint based on that. So people aren't necessarily excluded, or at least have the opportunity to express their interest, yeah.
Being that the special council meeting would be open, that'd always be that way anyway.
Yeah.
Is that a template that council wants to follow, that they suggest?
That have this special meeting, and then have the community members acknowledge if they're interested, and then we'll go from there? Or just have this meeting?
I think we just set up a special council meeting, if there's a couple people we'd like to invite, be it myself, or somebody from council, to be from the public, and the public's invited anyway, because it's an open meeting, so anybody can really voice their opinion.
And if someone's interested because they watch this on TV or seen it in the paper, they could express their interest to you.
Right.
To be included for consideration, right?
Right. So with that being said, so it gets out in the public in the right timeframe that we got it publicized, it's going to delay at least one more week, so Joe can put it in the paper, and this recording gets put out on television, so it's. I don't see going any less than that, because then we're not inviting the public.
It's a very cumbersome process, I think, but.
So with that being said, then we'd have Lori start setting up a special meeting date by email, so we can get the most people to attend, and hopefully have that done before press time, when Joe's going to put this in the paper, that that meeting date's already put in the paper with this article.
But do we need them before we start interviewing? The community members?
I think what they're looking at here is some of the input, too, aren't they? Or is it just the first round of interviews?
I thought it was just the interviews.
Do you have an issue with South Central just starting the post, the position, getting that going?
I have no issue with that at all. I just wanted to make sure we had the parameters right, that everybody in council wanted on it. That's the only thing I wanted, because I don't want it to come back and say, "I wanted this, and it wasn't on there." I'm not going to go down that road again, so I'm leaving it all up to council, what they wanted on, on the search, and what they wanted included in the search, and that's all I care.
Because it would be helpful if we could have South Central just start the posting process, get that going, while, you know, we wait to have the special meeting to determine the interview and hiring structure. Then they help the city out.
How's that sound to council?
So were we changing anything with this, then?
The job description? Do you want me to put that leadership abilities, like number eight? Is that what you wanted, or not?
Well, they should have leadership abilities, communications, got to be high requirement. The things that we've found in the past that were cumbersome for the city, I think we need them included, you know, that, and.
Did they publish this whole thing?
Yeah.
As a position?
Yeah, as a posting, yeah.
They don't put it in like the advertisement, but I think it's like an attachment if you go on.
Attachment, so they go to see the requirements or whatever, yeah.
That's what I said. I went into David Brown, who is doing Arlington, and it's all on their websites. It's not, you know, in newspapers.
Okay.
I'm sure if I did a search on Indeed, or some of the other various sites, it would be in those locations, probably in Monster, probably in 100 different online places where people go these days.
And then that desirable qualifications, what was it, experience in municipal?
Well, that's what I brought up. I don't know if the council agrees with that. If they're okay with it, you could put that in there.
I have no problem with it, because experience in municipal government can be a councilperson, it can be a mayor, it can be something, that's experience, but, but. They might have served in someplace else, so yeah, that's fine.
Under desirable, not.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Changing it to five, three years.
I think if we want to open the pool, I don't think we better go any more than three.
Right.
But keep in mind, if we're putting it at three years, that means we have to be very good at our interviewing process, because the pool's going to be opened up a little bit more, so you have to be right on top of things with interviews.
And even before that screening.
Right, and screening before the actual interview process, so it's.
Those are things we need to address with.
Yes, so that.
That's what?
The first round of screenings, what we're going to do, and what's going, who's going to be involved with that, and how many are going to be brought forward, it's, you know, sometimes, what happened in our last round, if I remember the numbers right, it was about 38, and we ended up with four. And one got a job, so we ended up with three. So that was 38, was our pool the last time.
Interviewed, interviewed 10 in Mankato.
10 out of the 38 had the first round of interviews. So that telling you that quite a few got whacked and didn't even make the interview process, so it's. And I don't see this being any different, to be real honest with you, and because of all the cities looking for administrators, it's going to be tough.
We could have multiple same people applying for this job, and Arlington, and.
Uh, yes, yep, yep. But I agree, if we're going out for the search, we should get an ad going.
Yes.
So I should send a job description, this job description, once I've amended it, to South Central, and have them start the job postings?
Is that what council wishes to do?
Okay.
Should we put that on our Facebook page, Joe?
That's, yeah, that's a great idea.
What was that, Jess?
Should we put it on our Facebook page also?
So the Facebook page will say, "Contact South Central," though?
Ty does our Facebook page, so.
What's that?
Ty does the Facebook.
I understand, I'm just saying, though, but if, so if we put it on our city website, if we put it on our Facebook page, but they're coordinating the search, you would think that you would want correspondents to go to them, not to City Hall.
I'll get the contact information then to Ty to maybe a link or something to get an email to them.
Actually what Arlington has, they have David Brown and Associates links to the job description, to the whole process. I mean, they've got two or three links in there that.
Any other discussion on this topic?
So then what's our next step? So I would, we do not need the community members until the first round of interviews, is that correct, from that stated email?
But isn't the special meeting to sit down with South Central to finalize how the hiring structure is gonna go?
Right, cause we want them to weed through.
So you still need to have like a special meeting with the council and the South Central?
Yes, yes.
We can still invite people interested?
Well, it'll be a special meeting, so it'll be open to the public anyway.
Right, yeah. But my meaning is, is we didn't have to wait if we didn't want to that whole week.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
The, the special meeting's just got a three days posted, so.
Yeah. So I guess that's gonna come up to where we can get a good attendance, so that's gonna dictate the special meeting date.
And South Central's?
And South Central's schedule, exactly. So Lori, I guess you're gonna have to get a hold of South Central first and start initiating that. And see what some time when they can meet and then they're gonna have to fire that out to council members and.
Okay.
Get a date set up from there.
Some choices for you guys to pick from.
Am I forgetting anything or do we have it covered? Okay, then we'll move on to unfinished business. And we got nine A, twenty seventeen sanitary sewer project and I guess we're gonna talk about some appraisals stuff.
Yeah, I'll take that if that's all right.
Have at it.
All right. So my ultimate request to the council tonight is for approval to hire a person named Trevor Brovold. To do an appraisal relevant to the two thousand seventeen streets and utility project. Here's the situation, we have the project going on, we have an assessment hearing that's scheduled for the next council meeting. The one assessment that's being proposed for that project is for American Lutheran Church. And that assessment is for approximately sixteen thousand dollars. Now, the reason that there's just one assessment out of that project is that. Most of the work that's being done is considered maintenance or repair, pipe lining, that sort of stuff. Under our assessment policy, we can't assess for maintenance and repair type issues, we can only assess for new work. Pipe bursting is putting a new pipe into the utility. So just the way the project has worked out, it's just the one property which happens to be American Lutheran Church. Where we need to put in the new pipe, so that's where the assessment comes in. We have the assessment hearing coming up. American Lutheran Church has hired an attorney and they have filed an objection to the assessment. Filing an objection starts the process of a formal challenge to the assessment process. So right now with the objection, if the council were to go forward with the assessment despite the objection. It is foreseeable that we would end up in court and we would have to show a judge that the assessment was proper. Under Minnesota law, a city who's assessing for a project like this can only assess if the benefit to the property. From the project is equal to or exceeds the amount of the assessment. So in order to prove that. I would have to present to the court expert testimony about land values and benefits, and that's where an appraiser comes in. Our engineers aren't experts in that field, I'm not, none of us have the expert education or experience. To really talk about the benefit of a project to the land. So that's where, that's where we would need to hire an appraisal to really prove that the city's assessment is appropriate. Back in two thousand six and two thousand nine, the city had gotten appraisals for similar type projects. I did contact that firm who did those appraisals. They were too busy, so they referred me to Trevor who used to work for him. I talked with Trevor, got the fifteen hundred dollar quote. The one caveat, if you wish to hire an appraiser, is that he cannot be done by the next council meeting. We would have to move the assessment hearing to the first meeting in September. Now, you may be asking yourselves, well, is this really, is the fifteen, sixteen hundred dollar assessment really worth it? Should the council just not assess it, the problem goes away. The problem with that is, is I talked about, it's just the nature of the project that we just ended up with one area for two thousand seventeen. That had the pipe bursting. Well, in the two thousand eighteen project, right now we are calculating twenty-seven properties that need the pipe bursting. So there would be, we're looking at twenty-seven properties to be assessed. Right now, we're estimating the assessment at eighteen hundred dollars each. So that would be forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars that we're looking at just for the mainline pipe bursting. Along with that, we would have sanitary sewer connections that would need to be done. So those same twenty-seven properties would be assessed, another eleven hundred dollars each totaling twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred. So as you can see, we're looking at over seventy thousand dollars in assessments. So if we choose not to go with the assessment in two thousand seventeen, then the city is hard pressed to justify going forward with the assessment. In two thousand eighteen. And just to make things more fun, with all that being said, let's say you wanted to do the appraisal. There's no guarantee that the appraiser is going to find that the amount of the assessment is equal to the benefit. There's no guarantee, we'll just see what he says. I have to think that there's some benefit because if you didn't do the project with the church and the pipe failed. Then they're without a sewer and then where are we? That has, there has to be some value, I believe. I just can't tell you if it's gonna be the sixteen thousand or not.
Typically, this stuff is done when the streets are done, correct?
Well, that's how the, that's how the other projects have been, correct?
It's just that because these pipes are so bad that they have to be done early, correct?
Well, they're not located in the streets actually.
Well, the alley part.
The mayor brings up the key point of this whole project is all the other projects we've done have always been in the streets. The streets were in bad condition, they needed to be replaced, so naturally we replaced the pipes underneath them. This particular situation, the sanitary sewer's in the alleyway, not in the street. The alleyway also serves churches, drive entrance and parking lot. So it's paved, it's concrete, and it's in good condition, it's in fairly good condition, so there's no reason to replace that. So we're pipe bursting so that we don't have to dig through the concrete. If we dig through the concrete, the assessment, that should be more. Because we have to account for the cost of replacing the concrete pavement. That, clear up your question or maybe not?
I think that's where a lot of the people as residents are saying, how come it can just be that, but they're taking the aspect that it's either. Not in the street right of way and it's in an alley right of way, and that's what's making this all different.
That's what makes it different than any other project we've done. All of the other projects we've done since two thousand seven, the pipes are in the street.
Also, they weren't pipe burst, they were pipe replacements.
That's correct, thanks for clarifying that.
So I mean, to me, that's still the other elephant in the room. And I'm sure the engineers are going to say pipe bursting is considered replacement, not a repair, because that's where that. Assessment aspect falls into it. If it's a repair, you don't assess, if you replace, you do. So I would question, and this would be a don, would they bring forth American Lutheran Church and their attorney, experts that would say. No, pipe bursting is not recognized as a replacement, so, you know, it's gonna be an argument on that potentially as well, so. You know, that's to me, the, what's the confidence level that pipe bursting is actually replacement, industry wide?
It's a new pipe.
They're dragging a new pipe through.
I understand, I'm just saying that, you know, you think about the arguments.
That's one of the reasons we didn't feel comfortable recommending assessing for the pipe lining, because it's not a new pipe, it's a pipe liner. And, and just for this whole discussion here, assessing for that, we had some concerns that there may be some discussion. That, wait a minute, you're not replacing my pipe, you're just lining it, you're just repairing it, even though it is a rigid liner, it adheres to the wall, it'll last decades. But there may be an argument there.
Basically, if that pipe wasn't there, you wouldn't line it, you know, so.
On the two thousand eighteen project, are any of the pipe burstings in streets, or are they also in the street crossings or?
The majority of the pipe bursting is in the alley. There's one section. That they're all in the alley, actually, and in side yards.
But it is still an alley, it's still the city's right of way, it's still an alley.
That's correct.
We have the same problems there as we're having here where the, that's really an easement, it is in an alley.
I guess I'll maybe defer to Brent. I think more of the issues on the twenty eighteen project is just the amount of space that we have to work in. If we had to dig with a backhoe and open cut, it'd be very expensive because of some of the utilities that we need to get relocated. And quite honestly, in some areas, I think it'd be virtually impossible because of some of the buildings and garages that are in the way.
My main question here, this ain't the first time anybody's done this, right? And they're assessed in other cities, I'm gonna guess, correct? That answers my question.
Pretty much there you have it then.
So I, I think we should go and move forward with the assessor and move forward to protect ourselves from the lawsuit that might be coming against the city. But it has to be a motion from council.
How does that affect your timeline?
One comment that I was gonna make is I know Mr. Brovold had said he'd have it done in about a month. We will need to reschedule the assessment hearing. I don't know if the city wants to maybe push it out a little bit further just to give him some more time. I'd hate to reschedule it twice in case there's a delay in assembling it. Lori, I guess, when do we need to get the assessment roll to the county assessor? Is it usually in November?
November, beginning of December usually.
So I wouldn't wanna push it off that far, but what I'm saying is maybe we wanna give Trevor a little bit more time, I guess it's up to the council and the city.
I think if we can move it to the first meeting in October, that would be appreciated.
Actually give everybody plenty of time.
Yeah, I would just hate to reschedule it for the first meeting in September and find out he needs another week to finish up his calculations or whatever it may be. Cause what we'll have to do is we'll send out notices again to all of the affected property owners, just rescheduling that assessment hearing, which, which isn't an issue, we just wanna make sure we got the date correct.
And from a construction timeline, that pushes you then perhaps into November-ish or you'll still be fine?
I'll let Brent answer that.
Yeah, construction actually is supposed to start tomorrow. So construction wise, it won't affect.
It's irrelevant.
The assessments won't affect the construction at all.
Yeah, assessments won't hit until next year anyways.
Exactly.
When do those, when are those streets supposed to get done around the church? When are those on the schedule, do you know?
I have to look at the map behind the board, but I think, I think it's on eight or ten years, at least, maybe even longer.
But see then typically, that's when their utilities get done, even though they're in the alley. Typically, when everybody else, their streets get done, that's when their utilities get done, correct?
On past projects where the utilities have been in the street, we've done them all at the same time.
Right.
In this part of town, you pull the water into sewer in the alleys.
Yes.
So we're doing the alleys first, if you will, because that's what the issues are right now. When the streets are done at a later date, there'll be a separate assessment just for the street.
Right.
So that'll be a separate assessment and that'll be, you know, I would estimate eight or ten years, maybe even longer if we follow that schedule legally out. So there will be another assessment for the street work and that, that'll be at a future date.
Right, but what my, what I'm saying is, is most people, every time that there's been a street project, they get assessed for the utilities and the street.
That's correct.
The church is just getting charged for the utilities right now and further down the road, when we get to their street. They won't have to, they won't get assessed for their utilities again, they'll just get assessed for the street.
That is a correct statement.
So just like that church got assessed for their utilities and the street all at one time.
Yes.
Right?
That is correct.
So. That, that's my point that I'm bringing forward is, you know, there, there is, I mean, it's the same as everybody else, I mean, there is no.
We're following the same process.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, to get back at the question at hand, does the council want to hire out to get an appraisal done on this assessment?
So move.
There it is, the motion's been made. Do I have a second? Tom's made the motion, seconded by Jessica, to hire out for appraisal of the American Lutheran Church assessment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Then we move on to nine B.
Done.
Yeah.
Ms. Ware?
Yes.
Don, would they wanna take action on changing that assessment date too? Would that just be a motion?
Yeah, that's a good point, Justin. Can we just get a formal motion changing it to the first meeting in October, just so we can?
What is the date, the first meeting in October, so we get the actual?
October fourth.
October fourth, okay, then I need a motion for, to move that assessment hearing to October fourth.
I make a motion to move the assessment hearing to October. Second.
Motion's been made by Sean, seconded by Jessica, to move the assessment hearing to October fourth, twenty seventeen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we got Andy here to talk to us about some solar stuff. Was here before and he's got the new sale price put up, right?
Are you kidding me, this, we're here to save you money?
Wow.
All right, so I will keep this brief. I have been here before, I was here back in March with Evan, we were talking about both permitting as well as the subscription. So this is just focusing on subscribing to offset your energy usage with solar. And we're here to just present the economic savings, so we'll basically just flip through this, this is all just for your knowledge, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time. But again, we're Innovative Power Systems, we're developing about thirty-two of these different gardens across the state. And we're in the final stages of wrapping up fifteen gardens out on the west side of town here. And the reason that we're back with lower pricing is we have one subscriber slot open left for a garden in Renville. And as soon as that spot is filled, we're beginning construction on almost thirty million dollars worth of work. So you can see why it's, we wanna get that done. We have been around twenty-five years, we'll flip to the next page, current subscribers. You'll see we mostly work with cities and schools. This program makes sense for entities that don't move. So basically, anybody in Excel territory who won't be relocating to a different state, it makes sense because you're purchasing energy through Excel for the rest of time, basically. Customer testimonial, you can read at some other point, but the whole goal here again is that you guys can support renewables without spending any money upfront. Plus you'll actually save money starting year one and continue saving through twenty-five years. Next page, you can see the Red Wing Solar Garden, this was the first garden in the state to come on. This was the first garden in the state to come online that was full size at the time, which is five megawatts. All of these gardens that we're doing now are the max capacity at one megawatt, which is about, so a fifth of the size of this garden presented. And again, we're doing about 32 of these across the state this year. The next page is the historic rate increases, and this is essentially what you guys are hedging your bet against. So everybody here with an Excel account knows that each year, your rate goes up. And this is a document from Excel that shows their average rate increases over the last 14 years. They didn't include the most recent two years. This year, rates went up another 5.7%. But overall, history shows us that your rates are going to continue climbing at about 3.5% each year, okay? The next page is where we get to your actual savings. So there's two columns that I wanna point out first, before we get into this. The middle column says PPA cost per kilowatt hour. So what we're here offering today is your ability to lock in the price that you'll pay for these credits for 25 years. No escalator. And this is something where 99% of cities and schools who have signed up for a subscription are locking in between a 1% and 3% escalator. So that's kind of a hedge against Excel's rates that are going up. And they had to make a decision of whether it was worth it to take a, you know, 1.5% or 2% escalator. In this model, we can lock you in at 11.6 cents. Now, what you're getting for that is the third column, the bill credit per kilowatt hour. So each time this garden produces a credit that you guys are signed up for, on your bill, there will be a credit for 12.3 cents. You'll then receive an invoice from us, and you'll pay us 11.6 cents. Those credits start adding up. And the bill credit per kilowatt hour starts at 12.3 cents, but each year, that continues to go up as Excel's rates go up. If their rates go up by 3%, the bill credit goes up by 3%. Now, because you guys are locked in, rates could stay the same for 25 years, and you would still save money. But when rates continue to go up by 3% to 5% each year, your savings continue to grow. On this chart, the second column says subscription size, and I put 500,000 kilowatt hours. All I'm asking for today is the ability to explore this further, and it would be Lori signing a sheet that we have. It's a release. It will allow Excel to send me your usage. I'll total that up, and I can tell you how much you can sign up for. You can come back to the next meeting and have a chart that will reflect your actual savings. I would guess for a town your size, you'll be between 500,000 and a million kilowatt hours. Bigger cities that we work with are like 10 million. Green Isle down the road, they use 98,000 kilowatt hours. So it, it all depends, but I think this will be pretty close. But regardless, you'd wanna sign up for as much as you can, because these are just basically coupons that show up on your bill, and then you pay for a portion of them.
I like it without the escalator.
Yeah, and essentially, you're saying, if there is no increase over 25 years, which of course will not happen, we're looking at about a $62,000 savings over 25 years, which didn't cost us anything. Now, obviously, as there's increases every year, that number would certainly go up to, in this example, to the 600,000.
Correct. It's about as low risk as you could possibly get. I mean, I, with the escalator, I still think it's a great idea. But with no escalator, I, I wish I could sell it all over, make my job a lot easier.
There's no risk here without the escalator.
Now, this is not the firm that we gave the conditional use permit.
This is the same firm.
Same firm.
So this is, yeah, same here.
Same firm, but our juice won't necessarily come out.
Come from there, yeah.
Correct. Yours will actually come from a garden in Renville, and that's the only reason that we are doing this rate, is it's, there's almost no Excel territory out there, so a few of the cities already picked over. The schools are subscribed. I mean, we wanna work with credit-worthy individuals, so cities and public schools are kind of our number one.
Well, I know at one point, we had asked for proposals for this, which we, we never got, but, um...
Well, the last one was with the 1.5% escalator that he presented to the city the last time.
And that, so for perspective, I can tell you what other companies are doing too. So that's our typical one. We do 11 cents with a 1.5% escalator. The average rate that you end up paying is about 13.5 cents over the 25 years. So we're lower by about 2 cents compared to our last proposal. Other companies, they'll do something where they'll lock in like a half a cent savings for all 25 years. So what they're doing is, they are getting the savings, as energy prices do go up, they take the savings and just give you your tiny chunk. We are more than happy to do that, but it's not a very good deal for you guys.
Really?
And that's, honestly, that's the only time that I used to lose in these competitive situations, is when people didn't wanna worry about the escalator. Now, without the escalator, you guys, you get the reward, and there's almost no risk. The process is simple. I can send Lori the release. It's, it's a one-page document from Excel. She signs it with the account number for Excel. I submit it, and then within a week or two, they'll send me back a report of all of your usage. I can come back to the next meeting with an updated chart, present real savings, and then in the meantime, I can even send a contract. The contract's about 25 pages. It's a pain in the butt. There's a lot of language in there that's solar-specific, that if, I'm assuming you'll be the one reviewing it.
Yeah.
Have you looked at them in the past?
I have seen maybe two or three of the contracts from other people, yeah.
Okay. They don't make any sense if you've never seen one. I'm sure your first, so I can help with that. We also have a legal counsel that we just hired to help explain it to people, so I can set you up with them. But it's, it's pretty standard. It says, when a credit shows up, we're gonna ask you to pay us for it, for 25 years. If the credit doesn't show up, you don't pay for it.
See, no problem moving forward with that. Yeah, I agree.
Make a motion to authorize Lori to send the release and start this process.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Sean, to continue the process with the solar gardens and bring, um, more formal proposals to the cities. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
I have one request from a note-taking perspective. If we can leave out the actual rate of what they're signing up for, I would appreciate that. I don't wanna get 19 phone calls tomorrow.
Joel, you heard that?
Flat rate is fine.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That looks like it brings us no, it doesn't. We got other down here with extravaganza, Lori.
Yes, I just need to know who can ride the float this year. Don't all jump at once. Let me know, so I can make sure that I have stuff for you guys. I have a float reserved. It'll be at Melrose, where it was last year. And Bob will be pulling it with the city truck. That's all I have.
Okay, with that, I'd look for, unless you got any other discussion item quick, or otherwise, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Jim, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.
How's your day?
Better. Much better than the summer, it's back out, so. After we were shoving potato chips.